You ready?
Yeah, apparently he put in a.
We're good.
We're good.
Oh, cool. I haven't seen more and more of those.
No show, it's just the agenda.
Agenda.
Okay, so the Planning Commission meeting for June 22, 2015 is called to order. We have a work session tonight. And first up, I'm going to talk about the food cart update.
Right. And actually, before I start there, quite a bit of paper on your, on the dais in front of you tonight, we'll walk through all that. The first thing you'll see is the 2015-2017 goals for the City Commission. So you can have copies of that, look through it at your convenience, just to give you an update of the goals that were put forward by the Commission that we're.
Out of date.
It is, we're having new ones made, so we will get you a new picture as soon as we get that completed. So this is also what drove the, our budget for the biennium, as you may recall, we went through a two-year budget process, so these goals in here, think of them as a, as a two-year work plan for all the departments to work on over that time period. The second thing is probably the most important thing on your dais. It's a volunteer appreciation, your sticker for your free food. Please don't lose, Kathy Wiseman beats me if I have to go back and ask for more. So Thursday, July 23rd, 5:30 down at the end of the Oregon Trail. We also have some coupons on there in the front there for thanking you for all the hard work, especially this committee, you see a lot of controversial big issues for the city. I think you guys are great to work with, so I really do appreciate working with all of you, it's always fun.
He says that almost all of you. He says that to everybody.
Oops, so that's where we're at on that. Okay, we'll jump into food carts.
It was four to three.
So on the dais, you have a memo, a draft memorandum from me, it's dated June 17, 2015, it's mobile vending food carts and food trucks. This is one of those issues, it's kind of people love them or they hate them, there's not a lot of middle ground on these. But we've been getting a lot of inquiries on both sides, folks who want to put food carts in, bring them in on their property or on vacant lots, and then you, we have a lot of folks, existing brick and mortar restaurants who've made the investments, paid the system development charges, property taxes, who are concerned about the impact that that would have, not only on their existing businesses, but the aesthetics of that. I had an existing policy that was written prior to my employment here, so about 15 years ago, by the previous Planning Director Maggie Collins. Essentially, what it said was that carts need to go through the same site plan and design review process as a stick-built building, had to pay their system development charges, had to hook up to water and sewer, so essentially they were treated as if they were a standalone building. We relied on that policy. Recently, we had a business come in, worked with the city attorney, and there was a question about how that policy was adopted. So essentially, what I'm proposing to do is I've laid out how I, how we in the Planning Department have historically interpreted and allowed food carts in certain situations in the city. My goal is to meet with Main Street Organization, the Chamber, and let them know, and then I'm going to bring forward this policy as, to be adopted by the Plan, to be considered by the Planning Commission to adopt it as the policy of the city. So essentially, I'd be bringing forward a code interpretation for you guys, for the Planning Commission to consider. So what I've laid out here is that in, right now, our code doesn't talk about food carts, they don't consider them at all. When we adopted the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, when we created the new zone, we did allow them in that zone. So essentially, on the Blue Heron property, they are allowed, but they still need to go through, there's still more work on that that has to occur. The code needs to be written for that new district, the design standards need to be written. But in every other zone, we don't, we don't mention them, and so we rely on this policy. When we updated the code, we allowed outdoor markets, and there were certain time periods when an outdoor market could occur, primarily after 6:00 PM on the weekdays, on the weekends. If they wanted to be earlier than 6:00 PM on the weekdays, they went through a conditional use permit. We, when we look at outdoor markets, typically, there's food associated with those. And so we felt that as part of a, of outdoor market, which has a limited duration of when they're there, that we would allow food carts as part of that. We also looked at special events, such as festivals downtown, we have multiple festivals, whether it be at Clackaman Park, on Main Street, all throughout the city, even on private property, grand opening for businesses. So how we've done that in the past is if you give me a start date and an end date, the cart's going to be here from Friday at 5:00 PM to Sunday at 5:00 PM. We consider that a special event, and we allow the food cart to occur. So essentially, what we're trying to avoid is the 24/7 parked on a property, because we don't, we believe it has to go through site plan and design review for such a situation like that to occur. So really, my intent would be to bring the code interpretation to the Planning Commission. If through this process, we decide we want a larger conversation about food carts and amending the code, that's not what I'm proposing to do at this time. If it is something we would put it into, we have a file of future code changes for discussion, and we would propose to do it at that time. If we're going to have, you know, if we want to allow them, if we just want to go out and just, you know, identify a zone and a process, that's not what I'm proposing to do at this point. We would take a note of it, take it back, and when the time arises, when I have funding and staff available to do future code amendments, that would be one of the items that we would include. And, you know, I understand both sides of this, you know, I've, you know, I've seen some food cart, food pot areas that are well-designed, function very well. I've seen others in less pedestrian-heavy areas that are atrocious, they're essentially drive-throughs or drive-up parking areas that have none of the pedestrian capacity to support them. So I understand both sides, you know, food, you know, entrepreneurship, multiple food options, but then I also still understand the aesthetics, the equity issue. And so if we are going to go down that road at a future date, there would be quite a bit of public outreach and discussion about where is it appropriate, how do we process those? So just wanted to give you a heads up, give you kind of an example of how we interpret the code right now, how we have been applying it, and so when you do see this in the future, it's not a complete surprise when I, you know, because I'll be bringing that up as, as the Director.
So you're not looking at any action from us this evening, just?
No, it was more of, just to give you an update on.
So are you saying right now, we can couple food carts with events?
We do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have been.
Yeah, the, I mean, all you have to do is look at the concerts in the park.
Concerts in the park, the Family Fun Festival. You know, we haven't really seen it at First City Celebration, but you do have food vending out in the streets, you know, most, most of it's, you know, some of the adjoining businesses bringing out, but setting up cooking and drinking facilities out in the public right-of-way. So it's not technically a food cart, but it's very, very similar.
Tony, they have, they have to get some sort of a permit or business license doing that?
Yes.
And at that point, you can put a time and a, and a duration that they, and that's how you control it?
That's how we have been historically, yes.
Can a business throw in a special event every weekend, is that what you're trying to avoid?
We're avoiding, yeah. You know, if someone came in and said, "I'd like 52 weekend permits," we would, we would probably deny it, saying that's, you have no kitchen, you know, essentially, you're just trying to create an eating establishment, but you know, a grand opening, right, we consider that a special event. One of the festivals downtown, we consider that a special event, you know.
Some of these things can really be a public health problem, if you don't have any control over the cleanliness of them, how they, how they prepare food and stuff like that, you know.
Some of them can be fabulous.
Yeah, they can.
And that's the thing.
You know, the, the thing, I'll just weigh in real quick, that I work in downtown Portland, so, you know, they've, I appreciate the position and the policy that Oregon City's taken on this, because that deal where you, you have a truck, because it has wheels on it, sitting 24/7 in one spot, pretty soon, all the tires are flat, and it's up on blocks, it becomes an eyesore.
It does.
And on the other hand, some of the best food I've eaten is it from a food cart. So I, you know, I think that there's a middle ground that makes a lot of sense along the line of what you're talking about. I, I find it tremendously ironic in Portland, because you've got the Design Commission and the Planning Commission are essentially planning Nazis. And when we go in with a building for a design review, they are looking at every little thing, every single little detail on the building, and they're telling us that the windows have to be this way, or detailed this way. Now, directly across the street, there is an entire block of food carts. And we have joked that at some point, what we want to do is photograph that whole street frontage, and in our application, that will be the first floor of our building. How could they turn that down?
We're going to mimic this.
And most of the staff eats there, so it's, it's hilarious. But I, I think the, the direction that the policy is outlined right now is the one that makes the most sense to me.
You know, what you should do for your designs is just design your building and put like those huge, like mining earth mover tires on each corner, and say, "It's not a building."
That's right.
"It's just a car parked at this location."
It's a gigantic cart.
And then, and then, you know, so you have no, no standards, you have to leave this alone.
Tony, a quick question, Bob brought up a fact about health, but health issues aren't in the purview of the city, right? Those carts probably have to go into some health review or some.
Go through the state.
Right, and ours is just only placement and that, those kind of things.
Mine placement, yeah, business license.
They're at the airport now.
Okay, so.
Okay, so that was, like I said, just an update on, on, on what you're seeing and what you'll be seeing soon.
What I would tell you is be prepared to add that to your folder of future things to be greatly discussed, but I, I like the direction you're going.
Thanks. Okay, so the next item, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Beaver Creek Concept Plan Update.
So Beaver Creek Concept Plan, we've went through, this was one of the concept plan areas for the UGB lands that were added in 2002, 2004, it was adopted by the City Commission. It was subsequently appealed up through Luba, it was remanded because of discrepancy between the concept plan being adopted and the 2040 growth concept map that Metro has adopted. So the first step that we did was we worked with Metro, amended the 2040 concept plan map to reflect the concept, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. That decision was appealed up, and essentially, we were found to be correct in our adoption of that, in the amendment that was made. What took so long on that is that it was part of the ordinance amending the 2040 growth map from Metro, was included in the ordinance adopting the UGB expansions, which was contingent upon the urban and rural reserve designation process that Metro had went through, both of those were appealed up, they were eventually rectified by the Legislature's grand bargain. So once that occurred, that was late last year, I believe it was November of last year, when this was appealed to Luba and remanded, the City Commission directed staff that once the appeals concerning the 2040 concept plan were done, to bring this through and re-adopt the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, and limiting, limited the criteria that we would be looking at, mainly focusing on infrastructure, the findings supporting the infrastructure. So we've begun that process, we have staff, planning, engineering, city attorney, working on new findings. Since this time, we've adopted a sewer master plan, a water master plan, a transportation system plan, that instead of using level of service, uses V over C, so a lot has changed since this was adopted, and as far as I know, I don't think anyone was on the Commission when we adopted this last time.
Yeah, City Commission.
So we're in the process, our goal is to have this in front of the Planning Commission towards the late fall, early winter of this year, for readoption and public hearings on that. So I've provided you the adopted concept plan for your reading and enjoyment in preparing for that to occur. You know, the concept plan really looked at creating a complete community out on Beaver Creek Road, across from the high school and the college, it includes a north employment campus, new zoning, and then housing towards the south, both higher density, transitioning to lower density as you continue east across the, the property on the south, down by the airport and the golf course area. So really, this was to just, you know, start bringing, you know, providing you the information, providing you what was approved last time, giving you a chance to kind of look through it, you know, the parts that you're interested in, you know, really, we would focus on, this time around, a lot of the infrastructure findings, police, fire, water, sewer, transportation, as we bring back additional information for your consideration through that legislative process to re-adopt it. Well, I can see a situation, we'll probably be bringing this back in a work session as we start to really refine the new findings that we're making, to once again, bring you up to date. But really, I just wanted to make sure that you guys had a copy of what was approved, it's going to be another one of these that's potentially going to be, you know, a lot of information coming forward, you probably have a lot of questions, so we'll try and get ahead of that a little bit in preparation for that.
You guys going to have a public involvement process of any kind?
It'll probably be pretty limited at this point, you know, we'll, we'll do our noticing, looking for public comment through that message, through that, through that process. You know, the, the amount of investment in public involvement that went into this original plan was, was significant.
Right.
And we're going to continue to work off of that.
So you guys have a good idea of who's who out there?
Yes.
What's your projected timeframe?
We're hoping to have this in front of the Planning Commission towards the end of fall, early winter, you know, probably September.
October, November.
Yeah, that, that, no, we'd probably be a little bit sooner than that.
October-ish.
Probably September.
So what Dana and I were, we're just discussing, so this is the plan as it was in 2008?
Correct.
Any changes have not been included in this, we'll be seeing those?
That is correct, we have not made any changes, this is the original document.
Is there a lot, same amount of reading for changes?
Sorry?
Is there the same amount of thick reading for changes coming up?
No, there should not be.
Okay.
No, it's primarily focusing on the infrastructure and addressing.
Well, since then, we've adopted the transportation system plan, and that'll be incorporated into?
Correct, yeah.
And the new LiDAR maps and the Geotech stuff that's come up will be.
Well, that's applicable regardless.
Right, but I'm just saying that, but that's part of the concepts of your infrastructure changes and.
You know, mainly, the, the Geotech areas, you know, are, were identified, you know, really, we're focusing on pipe size, you know, it's still a concept at this point.
Right.
Yeah, so we're not going to open up the Geotech session again.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not asking that at all, but I, when you say infrastructure, though, would that include roads?
Yes.
And so like, where they shouldn't, shouldn't go, are they going to be kind of adjusted based on?
No, probably not, we think we did a pretty good job of avoiding those areas, really, it's looking at, you know.
Yeah.
Level of, you know, V over C standards, cost estimating.
It's basically Beaver Creek Road.
Correct, it's, it's mainly Beaver Creek Road.
Right.
Yeah. Most of the interior are interior streets.
Yeah, well, and those are easy to build, because we'll just tell the guy to build.
We only went down, correct, we didn't go down to the local level, you know, we looked at, you know, Collector and Up.
But as this builds out, Holly Lane will be impacted, right?
Correct.
Is, are the city making any effort to coordinate that improvement of, of that traffic facility with the county? Will this be included?
I believe that in the county's TSP, the only thing they called for in their TSP that they just adopted recently were sidewalks. So you have this interesting, the city, it's kind of like a, like a sea, you know, you have part of Holly, part of Holly Lane is included, it was part of the Park Place Plan, and then you have a section that's in Clack County, and then you connect down by Maple Lane, right, that's already in the city, and then this is south of that, so you have two jurisdictions there, looking at that same, at that same area.
Yeah, and Loder Road.
Loder Road, correct, going out to the east. So where we have jurisdiction, we have upgrades in our TSP. I think one of the other, one of the other important things is we've, you know, we're having these discussions, you may recall, when we did the transportation system plan update, there were 99E and 213, the two state facilities, you know, originally, at 213 and Beaver Creek, we had a Diamond Point interchange proposed, and I think everybody acknowledged that A, I'm not sure that we as a community want that at that location, and then B, the ability of ODOT to bring any funds to any transportation projects right now is, is difficult and limited. So we were, we're working with ODOT, and as you may recall, as part of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, we adopted a multimodal mixed-use area designation on 99E, which essentially said, "We're going to accept higher level of congestion on 99E during the peak hour," because it's a regional center, and we're going to focus on safety, how do we make that corridor as safe as possible, what are realistic transportation improvements that we can make along that corridor, and then focusing on bike ped and making sure that the other parts of the system work as efficiently as they can. And as part of Willamette Falls, we're looking at the new lighting of the tunnel, and then as you're coming northbound on 99E, down that hill, into that corner, through that tunnel, it's a blind, blind left there, you know, safety enhancements, trying to slow people down, coming down that hill into the tunnel, there could be signaling that says, you know, "Red light ahead, be prepared to stop to reduce rear ends." And so as part of the 213 corridor, we're looking at that corridor, and then looking at alternative mobility standards on that corridor as well, because, you know, the fix at Beaver Creek 213, there really isn't one unless you're going to go to a, essentially interchange. And so trying to work with ODOT on what that's going to be, and then, and once again, it's that same concept, safety, 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 how can we make that, that, that intersection as safe as possible? Because really, during, you know.
Does the state control that intersection as far as signalization?
They have the jurisdiction, yes.
So all the signalization is under their purview?
I believe so, yes. I mean, they coordinate with us, but it is, it is their facility, right?
It's kind of an ambiguous situation where you've got a city street and a state highway crossing each other, who governs?
And a county one, yeah.
Yeah.
And I was told the same thing exists as you come off the Westland Oregon City Bridge, that that's, and that light right there, because that's why it's so long in the afternoons and so quick in the mornings, but it's, it's a state highway, from what I've been told.
It still boils down to funding.
Correct.
If, if funding wasn't the issue, then we'd, we'd have a solution, wouldn't we? I mean, we could engineer.
We could engineer it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think, but the, you know, the conversation's always been, how much money do you spend for that peak hour?
No, I, I was told by a guy who works for the state, that the primary reason that that intersection didn't become an interchange was that there was like a $900,000 shortfall in funding until that happened.
Yeah. We don't even, we, I don't think we ever got to construction design to actually cost estimate it out, but it'd be multi-multi-million dollar interchange, yeah.
Are you talking about the exchange where Main Street goes into?
No, Beaver Creek Road.
Beaver Creek, up above, not down below, okay, sorry.
No, it's basically what I was told at that time, which was a long time ago, not today's dollars.
Not today's dollars.
When it was built, it was roughly a million.
Oh, back when they, yeah.
Yeah, it was a million-dollar shortfall, about $900,000 at that time. In today's dollars, it's probably like four times that, at least.
Well, they didn't even have the money to put the safety barricades up until it became a lawsuit, so.
Yeah, you know, I think one of the, one of the difficulties for, for us is just when you apply background trips, you know, the amount of traffic that travels down Beaver Creek or 213 doesn't, isn't generated by the city. But yet, the city and the businesses and the property owners are expected to bear the vast majority of the brunt of those investments. So our discussions with ODOT is you need to make this more equitable. If you're going to tell us that we can't develop south of there, then we expect you to tell the same things to Malala, Malino, Beaver Creek, Cambie.
That's right.
I think the simple solution, we just drop a toll gate across on the, just inside our city limits.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll be right behind you, leave that charge.
So more to come on this, just wanted to let you know that we will be bringing this forward, this is some of the background, well, this is the adopted plan.
Something to look forward to.
Something to look forward to as we continue to move that forward.
So all the Luba appeals that you talked about are not even important to the, to our reviewing this, I mean.
They are, but Luba didn't address anything other than the 2040 concept plan, I fully expect this to be appealed again.
Again, because you said that they had found you to be correct, or the city to be correct, when you were talking about Luba, you said they had.
They remanded it, because we weren't consistent with the Metro 2040 map.
Right.
We've amended that.
And then they found it, that correct, the city was correct?
That's done, so now we're on to the next step.
Okay, so it could be remanded again, that will be part of what we.
Part of the process.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so next is the Willamette Falls Legacy Project update.
All right, so you have two sheets of paper on this, one is a large 11 by 17, it's an organizational chart, and the other is a fact sheet, eight and a half by 11, Willamette Falls Legacy Project, provides an update of where we're at. So as you're well aware, we adopted the, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project in the Vision Document, and right at Christmas, right around December of last year, we met the requirements of the state for the $5 million to be appropriated for the first phase of this project, that was matched by additional $5 million from Metro, as well as we were able, as one of the requirements, there were multiple requirements for the state, one was a financing plan that the Governor's Office signed off on, two was securing public interest from 99E to the end of the dam, and we, we accomplished, accomplished both of those. So with the $5 million, like I said, we have $5 million match from Metro, and then as part of the negotiation, Mr. Higurkin donated the easement along his property, so it's 120-foot wide easement along the entirety of the Willamette River across their property. He also agreed to 20% of the long-term operation and maintenance costs of that facility once it's constructed, as well as up to $900,000 towards the design and engineering of the Riverwalk itself. We also negotiated a terms to buy, to buy the lease on, on the PG dam that can be executed once the design of the Riverwalk is completed, so we, we met both of those requirements. As you, you know, you've probably seen, we then went out and solicited bids for the Riverwalk design and engineering, you know, we received 14 bids throughout the country, actually, some through, throughout the world, it was pretty impressive what we, what we had, what kind of we received. We narrowed that down to three, and then we, we chose Marri Reed with Snowheta and Dialogue. So we're currently negotiating the scope of work for the project, for the Riverwalk design and engineering, we expect that all, project itself will take about two years. Under current funding, we believe we can complete one phase of that, which will be determined as we go through this public participation plan, similar to what we did last time, on the design of the Riverwalk. So that'll be rolling out probably, you know, late, late summer of this year, we'll, we'll be kicking that process off again. What we realized was, you know, we had this great partnership with the state and the property owner, and Metro, and the county, when we were doing the, the master plan for the whole property, for the Vision Document. And then we started to just talk about the Riverwalk, but so much of the Riverwalk is dependent on the private property and the vice versa, right? We want this seamless interaction between the public and the private realms, we really want to make sure that, you know, there's going to be spots where, you know, maybe we're going through a building, you know, who knows what's going to come out of this? So we started to notice, we were kind of getting this tunnel vision just on the Riverwalk, Riverwalk, Riverwalk. And so what we did was we've engaged the partners, and essentially, we, we started with, you know, our, our current organizational structure, we have the public partners, we update them regularly, every, you know, six weeks, nine weeks, somewhere in there, we go back, check in, give them updates on the direction, get their policy feedback, that's made up of two elected officials and the CEO from each of the public partners. Then obviously, we all go back, each of our organizations, we update our councils or our commissions on the status through work sessions, and then we have a project manager. Right now, this is Kathryn Cromer out of Metro, or, I'm sorry, that's Kathryn Krieger out of Metro. Right now, this is Kathryn Cromer out of Metro, or, I'm sorry, that's Kathryn Krieger out of Metro. What we decided was there's so many moving parts to this, is that we needed one group that kind of tried to bring these things together. So we've had the technical advisory committee. So essentially, this is a team of staff members from each of the partners that meet weekly. We've been meeting weekly for over four years on this project. And this is where a lot of the larger policy decisions are made. My, I'm on this, my counterpart at Metro's on this. And what we saw was we have this, the Riverwalk, very public intensive, public investment. The next kind of bucket is the infrastructure, you know, obviously important to the private property owner, important to us. Essentially, we're going to be taking over this infrastructure, water pipes, streets, you know, what we need to get into the site. And then kind of this third bucket over on the right is, is really the development. You know, so really, that's heavy private side, but there is some, some resources we can bring, you know, from the public side through economic development, opportunities, grants, lining up contacts with organs or businesses that may want to move here, be interested in the site. And so you go from, on the Riverwalk side, quite a bit of public, and kind of transitions down to a little bit of public, but still important. Really, it's the private side that needs to make the funding work, you know, what do they want to do with the property? And so how can we assist that? So essentially, we've created three unique buckets with separate project managers for each of them. But there's a lot of crossover, you know, it's, you, you really can't, like, for example, we, we need a water line for the Riverwalk. We don't want to put a water line in for the Riverwalk and go, hey, we need a water line for the private development and run two parallel wa, you know, water lines a hundred feet apart. You know, so there's going to be that overlap of making sure the investments that we make on the public side are done to reduce waste, reduce redundancy, benefit the property, which has been our intent all along, to really catalyze the development opportunity on the site. And so, you know, and, and a lot of these situations, it was going to be same staff on some of these, right? Some staff are going to go over into multiple areas. So obviously, we just talked about, we have the funding for the first phase of the Riverwalk. I've been down in Salem with my counterparts. We've made another ten million dollar ask. Representative Barton has been a great champion for this project in trying to shepherd that, that money through. Right now, it'd be out of their capital construction, so essentially bonding. And so they're working out the details of how much bonded indebtedness they can take on. My understanding is that our project is in the mix. We've been providing ourselves to representatives and senators as necessary. They, right now, our understanding is that, they understand the project, it's just a matter of how much. Number we've heard is around eight million, and that'd be great. We're probably going to know something in the next two weeks. We're coming up to the end of the session here, this is how it happened last time. So then, for the infrastructure, the middle one, we applied for a community planning and development grant. It was what, what used to be the Construction Excise Tax Grant Program at Metro. We partnered with, with the property owner. So Oregon City is bringing twenty-five thousand, the county's bringing twenty-five thousand, the property owner's bringing four hundred and fifty, and then we applied for a little over five hundred thousand dollars. We should know on that probably within the next thirty days whether we were successful on that grant or not. And really, part of that CPDG grant is really looking at the infrastructure, getting more, you know, what's the phasing? How does development take, you know, really looking at, how do we take this property down? What makes sense? Where do you need that first investment? What's the crucial investments? You know, looking at parking, you know, how do we access the site? When it comes to parking, what triggers a parking structure, let's say? Where does the parking structure belong? So really, as part of that CPDG grant, it's really partnering with the private property owner to start getting an understanding of, of significant infrastructure. You know, we've got to remember, when we, when we looked at this, this is an eighty to a hundred million dollar project. You know, thirty million, thirty-five million was the Riverwalk. The remainder, that's infrastructure, to make this site development ready. And so how are we going to do that? We also have entered into a contract with Eco Northwest, and what they're doing is, when we did the vision document, you know, we came up with funding opportunities. And we identified, you know, twenty-two, twenty things, you know, that could potentially be funding, local improvement district, STC, your, your normal things, and then there are grants and whatnot. So what we've done is we've asked Eco Northwest to start looking at examples of projects so that we can come back and start having that conversation with the city commission and the urban renewal district about what are realistic in Oregon City. If we can narrow that list down to a handful, we can start focusing on those, whether it's a new urban renewal district, expansion of your urban renewal district, a local improvement district, you know, and, and then also, you know, we made some assumptions on development potential on that site, but, you know, what are the property taxes that are going to be generated from this? Because that could be part of the mix of how you start to pay for some of these infrastructure that's necessary. What are the planning fees? What are going to be the system development charges if we assume a base buildout? Because all the-
Toll.
The toll, yes. Once again, I am right behind you guys from a distance.
Is that at the tunnel? Both ends?
Both ends? So we're getting it at both ends?
Yeah, well, yeah, whichever end you're coming in from Oregon City, you got to pay.
Yeah, and we've got bridges, we've got lots of ways to-
And, you know, I think some of the things, you know, part of the discussion too is just an education of what is our current? You know, some folks are going to say, let's do an urban renewal district, right? But if you have no increment in the district, how do you, how do you pay for it, right? Let's expand the district. Well, you know, because of when our district was created, you can only expand it by ten percent, which only brings a couple million dollars, what good is that going to do? Right, so I mean, it's not only identifying things, but it's explaining why some options may or may not be the one to choose. And we just didn't want to have that education process before folks are in saying, hey, I need however much, and we don't know what to do. So that's going on concurrently with that. And then we have the development bucket, you know, that's really looking at, how can we put together, how can we use the resources of Oregon City, Clackamas County, and the state with their economic development professionals that they have there to start helping the developer identify opportunities? You know, they're, we, we had a great support from Senator Merkley's staff when they came out. They brought together, you know, HUD, Small Business Association, DEQ, EDA, but all of them kind of fit at a certain timeline in a development, right? I mean, EDA doesn't get involved until you're shovel-ready, you know? EPA is obviously only interested in brownfield or hazardous mitigation. So, you know, how can we tee these things up, understand the outline, understand the timeline of when? It's time to call Small Business Association, they can bring resources. So, and then, as all this work is going on, once again, that gets filtered up to the TAC so that we make sure we're coordinating, because you make a decision over on ECDEV, it could impact the other two buckets or vice versa. And then of those decisions, then we decide which ones need to be filtered up to the- So really, this is not only an organizational structure of how staff's going to function, it starts to set the terms for, essentially, we're going to need to enter into another governance model with all the partners. For the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, you know, we had a memorandum of understanding signed between all the partners that laid out roles, responsibilities, decision-making. That project's complete. So now we need to start thinking about, okay, what type of role? Do we need an MOU? Do we need something formal like an IGA? Because we're now talking, you know, you know, at least thirteen, fourteen, fifteen million dollars, potentially more if we get this additional funding from the state. I mean, it's real money, it needs to be accounted for, who's responsible for it? How does decision-making occur? And, or, you know, do we create another, a separate entity? You know, the, the Willamette Falls District or something, you know? So really looking at and considering what's the best model to move forward for the next two to four years with this project when it comes to decision-making, when all of us from separate agencies are putting funds into this project? And then, you know, just kind of a, a fact sheet of where we've been, what we've accomplished, and really where we're, where we're heading over, over the summer into, into next year with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and the Riverwalk Design and Engineering. This would be, as we go through the Riverwalk design, once again, we're expecting a, you know, robust public involvement outreach, you know, and we're really, you know, as we did last time, not only Oregon City, it's our backyard, we're, it's important to the, how it operates, how it functions, how it designs. But, you know, we really do believe this is of state significance. And so how do we build that broader coalition? That we're, we're going to need that support to make this successful, support our funding requests when they come forward for the project.
You know, I, I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the effort that is being put into preparing this organizational structure, because you, on a project like this, there's no way to guarantee a successful conclusion to it, and especially the probability that this is going to stretch out over twenty or thirty years before it's fully built out. But setting up a, you know, a very strong systematic structure like you've got here to kind of pull all those pieces together in kind of a holistic manner, I think that's laying the groundwork towards success better than almost anything else you could do.
I think, you know, when we first, before we had done anything on the, before this started, this was probably within the first nine months of Blue Heron going bankrupt, we did a tour up in Washington, we went and, I think it was Bellingham and up in Seattle. And one of the things we heard over and over again was that one of the most costly things and led to the failure of some of the projects that they were working on, significant projects up there, especially Port of Bellingham, which had three hundred and sixty acres, old lumber mill right on the water there was the governance. You know, they, everyone started out, hey, you know, everyone's excited, working together. New council gets elected, new port director, all of a sudden, they're working on competing plans, can't get anything approved, and, and it's still sitting there, you know, eighteen, seventeen years later. So, you know, that governance structure is, is really the bones of this decision-making, building the trust, moving the project forward, and withstanding, you know, kind of the, the ebbs and flows of the politics coming in and out of there.
Even with PDC, walking over the top of, you know, Northwest Riverfront, the Commerce Building and all that, watching that just rot because everybody's arguing about what the right thing is, is.
Tony, if I could just add, I'm amazed, being a storefront down on Main Street, how many people from Milwaukee, Oregon City, Oregon City, Lake Oswego, Westland, are ma- they're so well-informed on this, so the city's really done its good promotions, public relations, on getting the word out. But the one question I still get is, well, when is that Riverwalk going to start? And we really don't have a, a set date, do we, of when it might start?
If it's first successful over the next two years, we would, we would see construction in two thousand seventeen on, on the first phase.
About two years out.
To us, you know, I could imagine three phases, right? Ninety-nine E to essentially Mill-O is pretty straightforward. Mill-O, south to the PG Dam, is about the most complicated thing I've ever seen, and then you have the PG Dam, right? And so I could imagine that. And so, you know, and maybe something different comes out, or some different version of that comes out. Maybe as we get this additional funding, that changes the phases that can be implemented. You know, we're continually, not only looking at other grants to match the funding, because that's going to be one of the prerequisites, we set up this second ask from the legislature similar to the first one. Significant financial plan that the state signs off on, and a significant match to this, to the state's funding. So, you know, grants, philanthropic groups, private interest, fundraising. We're starting a friends group, you know? All that goes into the mix of how we're going to try to put these funds together to capitalize on the opportunity that we have, which then really does drive the schedule. But we do believe we have enough for phase one.
Well, the promotion of this and marketing has really been great. I mean, people from all over, I just mentioned a few communities, but they're all aware of what's going on here, so it's great.
And so as we do the Riverwalk Design and Engineering, like I said, you know, we'll have the kickoff, the public engagement, you know, probably very similar, you'll have, you know, three, four, however many concepts, get merged into the final concept. That would be coming back to the Planning Commission for review and approval, if everything goes well. So that would be something where, obviously, you're going to be involved, hopefully not only in the upfront, but you'll obviously be involved in the, in the approval and consideration of approval of, of that design.
Since we're in charge of infrastructure, has there been an infrastructure assessment? I mean, just my take of walking around the place a couple of tours is, we're looking at maybe nineteen seventies technology, you know, pipes.
It's all-
Yeah, so it's like, it's like a gut and rebuild is, is ground zero, and, okay. Because I'd, I'd want to make sure that, since the site's been there for a hundred and fifty years, that we make sure that when it comes time to reinstall infrastructure, that we install expansion ability, you know? I'm, and, and I guess I'd say technology can make things go two directions. A hundred years ago, you'd need, you know, a ten-foot diameter pipe for all the telephone lines. Now you need a one-inch pipe for the fiber optic cable. But who knows what's going to happen with, you know, phased plasma array systems or whatever in, you know, twenty years? So that's, you know, when the time comes, I just would suggest that, you know, I mean, I know you're going to lay out a good grid, but, and what you said about the water, you know, line, just, just flashed me to the thing that I know is the biggest pet peeve of every public works director, as well as every, every public citizen is seeing a brand-new paved street tore up because somebody forgot something. And then there's the patch, and so, yeah, just-
Yeah, I, I think planning ahead and avoiding redundancy are two key things, because you're-
Planning redundancy, not avoiding redundancy.
Well, planning to avoid redundancy, you know, that, that, that whole process, you know, I think it's going to make the thing more cost-effective, and it's going to do exactly what Damon says. You're not going to have to rip up the plaza that you just finished three years later.
And finally, the grass is growing.
Yeah. Because you forgot to put the pipe in for something.
Yeah, I mean, when, you know, one of the big things that you hear from Portland is, we want to bring cruise ships to the seawall. And when the flood happened and they destroyed Tom McCall Waterfront Park with all this, you know, heavy equipment and all that, they had the perfect opportunity to put in sewer and water lines to the seawall for the ships, going right to the Sullivan Pumping Station, their second biggest in the city, and they could have had ships there for the last ten years. But, oh, no, got to put the grass in. Now the grass is there. Now we can't do that, we got to make it up.
Yeah, wait a minute, they got to rip up the grass every year for the festival.
And that's what, that just amazes me, is this, this lack of, you know, left side, right side stuff, and-
Short-sighted client.
Yeah.
Tony, I'll never allow that to happen.
Well, and I think, you know, a lot of this too is really, you know, the strong partnership with the private property owner.
Yeah.
And it's really pushing towards, what, what do you want? We can draw a lot of options, but we need to start narrowing and setting some sideboards here so that we can appropriately size infrastructure, appropriately place infrastructure. You know, you can only plan for what, you know, what you can make a pretty good assumption on for growth.
Have you guys identified offsite improvements?
We have as part of the, well, as part of the original zone change and comp plan amendment. You know, you know, other things going on too is, we've already started a cultural landscape survey of the property. And we really, you know, because of just the amazing history on that site, you know, we didn't want it to be an afterthought, so we've invested. That work's currently ongoing, they're doing the literature research so that it informs the design of the Riverwalk rather than the other way around. We were also able to get a grant from the State Historic Preservation Office. This summer, they're actually going to go out and do a class out there, and they're going to do an archaeological dig along the Woolamille Foundation. Just an op, a great opportunity, working with the property owner. It's such a significant resource on that property. So, you know, a lot of things going in preparation for the next step that we're going, that's going to happen right now. So, big complicated project, but-
Tony, I think the strength-
Keeping it going so far.
The strength of that thing lies not in the, not in the what, and we'll get to the what as down the line, but the how, you know, the, the, the political aspect of it, the structure of that, so that as personalities change, the continuity of what we're doing continues because we've got a good political system in place that doesn't allow for some yahoo to come in there and torpedo the thing, you know, just because-
That's why that structure that Tony is talking about is so important, is players can change, but the structure is built.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Built to move things forward.
Well, look, we're wrestling right now as a city with, with the county on this tri-city sewer thing. That's a political football, you know, it's got to be, and probably deflated. Tom Brady got in there somehow and deflated that thing.
That's it.
Yeah. But these, these, these little things, you know, can really- But these little things, you know, can really, really end up really supercharged and affecting the whole outcome, if we don't pay attention initially on laying a foundation for that. It really can. Because they're going to control money, and when you start getting money involved, boy, you've got some real strong opinions on how.
That never creates a problem.
I just hope to see some progress in my lifetime before I've gone to my reward. I hope to see a lot of.
Get out there with your shovel.
And I have to say, Tony, it's, you know, concept plans are one thing, and, you know, Kung-Fu card updates, and, you know, a few buildings here and there, you know, that's always seems to be the attacks that happen to your department. And it's got to be rewarding your department to work on something that's got such a grand big vision like this. I mean, and to see people jumping on board and putting money towards it, it isn't just, we know this is the right thing to do, but nobody else will agree. I mean, you know, I have to say, the vision that you've been leading, and I know you've had a large portion of the goings-on, is really good, and I appreciate the work you've been doing.
Very impressive.
Yes. It's been a, you know, we have one of the most impressive teams across multiple agencies that have been committed to this, and it's been part of the strength and part of the speed of which it's occurred.
You're living with the air curse.
Though we always laugh, though, we're not allowed to work on this project alone. You always got to be in pairs, because you might just jump off a building at some point.
It's like playing a mountain, you got to be tethered.
You got to be tethered in some way.
As anybody's seen, Tony, you're down here somewhere.
Tony's name will go down in the history books. So, do we want to move on to?
Sure.
Item five, process of preparing an application for Planning Commission review.
So, you know, we had some of those emails after the last Oregon City School District Master Plan and Decision, and I appreciate that, I really do. There was no, you know, I think we have a strong enough relationship that, you know, all they're trying to do is make it easier for us and better, so I really do appreciate it, there was no, wasn't taken the wrong way in any way, so.
You know, I just, to throw some perspective on it, I've been working with city agencies for a very long time, and how these applications are put together is a, it's very time-consuming, a lot of energy, a lot of stuff goes into it. But the structure of that application is so important, and I appreciated, you know, the fact that Denise kind of started the ball rolling, and Paul jumped in with some, I thought, outstanding suggestions. But the one thing I just wanted to throw out, from my perspective, working with a lot of other agencies, you know, Portland, Clackamas County, Hillsborough, Tewolton over the years, and in California as well, a number of agencies, the one thing that I would just say is kind of just a big-picture look at things, is that when you get an application and you have a tremendous volume of conditions of approval, that usually is a red flag for the people reviewing it, because it's, what that is telling me is that the applicant is not meeting the approval criteria. And so they're having to make a lot of secondary adjustments to get approval because they're not meeting.
Because I am through condition.
They're not meeting the approval criteria. And the one thing that I would really like to encourage planning is to maybe use a little bit stronger stick on the applicants, to challenge them that if the list of approval criteria or conditions for approval is getting too long, to challenge them to make some adjustments to their plan to meet the criteria, rather than coming up with ways to get around it.
So that's a, I told discussion of completeness versus adequacy.
Right.
And so I was always a big fan of adequacy, because a lot of times applicants will put together a really nice-looking submittal, and then when you read the paragraphs, it's crap. And you don't, and unfortunately, a lot of times you don't realize that until you call the project complete, and you've gotten into the analysis, and you've really gotten into the project, and it's like, wow, they don't have, you know, some of the major components that we need to make the decision to approve, so you're stuck.
Paul, can you just scoot forward for the mic?
You're stuck with a hundred and twenty day, and you got to make your decision, or your recommendation, bring it to us, or whatever decision-maker it needs to go to to get it done, anyway.
Well, being on the other side, as an applicant, I've been the one that's been challenged, you know, because I put the application together, I go in, and the first thing they do is they start going, wait a minute, you know, you're not meeting these criteria. So it becomes a situation where we have to, as the applicant, justify ourselves and our design. And I think that's healthy, that's really healthy, because whenever we are challenged by planning staff, they say, you're not meeting the criteria, you need to show us how you are going to meet the criteria. You usually end up with a better application. And the one thing that, I've been there, you're getting pushed by the developer, you're getting pushed by other people to get the application in, we've got to get that application in. So the problem is haste makes waste, and as we have seen, you get an application that's incomplete, and so everybody has to scramble to figure out how to fill the pieces in.
It's another thirty days, you know, on the timeline, too.
Yeah.
So, no, I think, a couple of things, it's been, it's one of those things where you kind of got to stop and look back a little bit, right? And so for us in planning, it's kind of been this incremental improvement, honestly. I think, for the most part, and I think a lot of our applications are so much better than they were when we started here, you know, and so we're constantly moving that. I think that a lot more scrutiny has started to go into the completeness review, which has been helpful.
Yeah.
And, you know, when I first started, we were kind of in the same boat, we were attaching seventy conditions of approval.
Yeah.
And we kind of got it whittled down where we could, you know, thirty kind of standard conditions, right? We've had turnover of staff, not only in planning, but in engineering, and so we've kind of seen the conditions start to creep up again, you know. And we've had situations where we, you know, we didn't necessarily condition something, and then we get into a fight after the fact about whether they have to do it or not. So there's this conservative, if it's not clear, condition it, right? We get that as the director, I get that from the attorney, you know, if you're not sure, condition it, right? Or put the onus back on them.
Right.
To provide more information after the fact, right? And some of this is logistics, okay? We submit an application, thirty days, we deem it complete, incomplete, whatever. We deem it incomplete, they provide information, we deem it complete, we start that one-twenty clock, we send out our public notice and say, if it's not a hearing, hearings are a little bit easier, it's just a staff decision, we say, you've got until May thirty-first to submit your comments. Public comment period's ended, you know, we're finally finalizing the, and it's like, oh, you know, they could probably submit something and clarify, but then we got to open up the public process again, add another fourteen days, so then we got to get them to extend the one-twenty, or we could condition it. So, you know, and I think what we wanted, what I wanted to point out, and I apologize, I pulled the wrong staff report, I pulled the library instead of the high school, but on the conditions, you know, I know there was some concern about who's responsible, which department's responsible for this, the timing of it, whether it's a prior to grading permit, prior to building permit, prior to certificate of occupancy. And what we started to do is, after the condition, is identify which department, whether it be Development Services, Planning.
Yeah, you started about six months ago.
Is responsible for that condition. You know, internally, and it probably isn't, it was, obviously was not reflected in the conditions that you saw, you know, we have an internal process for checking, okay, at issuance of grading permit, have these things been met? It's circulated between engineering and planning, you know, whether it be a tree protection for the grading permit, right, stormwater, you know, erosion controls in place. And really, you know, what it comes down to is, the end, the catch-all is the C of O, right? So we've, you know, we've got the building official, you know, okay, we need to check this. Engineering, you signed off, you're good to go, you got the surety, you know, improvements accepted, planning, anything outstanding, you know, that's kind of the last real hammer that we have. So internally, we've gotten much better at setting up those checklists in that process as we move through that, which obviously, like I said, wasn't quite reflected, because there was some confusion on timing in those conditions of approval.
And the classic thing is, is that, you know, that, especially with design review, I've seen this time and time again, when they, they want to, they want to get their C of O, or a temporary C of O, and they want to move in, and they want to get all their stuff in, and they want, you know, so slowly but surely, you know, the camel's nose gets under the tent, and pretty soon the camel's in there, and you're history, because you're not able to have any hammers, you don't have any hammers left. But I think by and large, yeah, you guys do a good job in keeping, you know, people's feet to the fire on the conditions, it's just.
Well, that raises the question, how much is this Planning Commission, or any Planning Commission, going to get involved in the administration of city ordinances, when that really is a responsibility.
The staff.
Of the staff.
Yeah.
Now, we don't, if a guy comes in and he's got a subdivision, and we look at it, and the streets meet, and there's water, and there's sewer, and yada, 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 the engineering department, the building department, all those people are going to enforce those building requirements, and we don't have to get involved in that.
Well, I agree with you.
I think we waste so much time getting our snoot underneath the tent with a good intention, and all of a sudden, we start getting a little confused, and the water gets a little murky, and I'm sitting here, I said, wow, how's somebody going to make a motion out of this?
Well, I agree with you, Robert, except that the conditions for approval generally are deviations from the criteria, the approval criteria. So if it's strictly by code, then we've got no issues. If, you know, if somebody is, all of the uses, the setbacks, the heights, if they're meeting all the criteria, then we have nothing to talk about, really, it's just, okay, let's approve this.
But if they're not meeting the criteria, shouldn't they come to us in the form of a variance?
Well, see, that's what the conditions of approval are, they are sane. We want to have relief from what the code says. So it's a condition to allow them to do something else, and that's where I think the issue is. So I guess what both Denise and Paul were suggesting is that if the conditions of approval could be presented in a way that it was easy for us to separate out.
I agree.
Into categories.
Right.
And one of the things Paul suggested is that you.
Just phase them.
You say, okay, everything that is subject to the building permit, for example, that's grouped in a group, and rather than necessarily being locked into a numerical order as the conditions are developed, if they could be put into categories, for example.
Well, you're talking about a format of a report.
A format for the presentation, so that it's easier for us to digest.
In other words, keep it simple, and I agree a hundred percent.
And so then that way, when we do our evaluation, one of the problems on this, especially this last application that we looked at, but I've seen it on other ones, where, for example, condition number two is related to transportation, that category, and then you get down to condition number twelve, and there's something else related to transportation, and then you get down to number twenty-four, you know, and so they're not collected in a way that you can say all of the transportation-related issues are together, and everything that is triggered that we should be concerned about related to a building permit is together. It would facilitate the review so much quicker, because instead of jumping back and forth, you can say, these four items are related to that, and they're all triggered by the building permit. And then as time goes along, they're triggered by other parts of the process, the TCO or whatever. And I would think it would also help staff, planning staff and city staff in their enforcement to be able to say, oh, well, these four things have to be met before we can issue the permit.
I guess, you know, a couple of things. One, when we updated the code last time in Site Plan and Design Review, so we, Oregon City's traditionally had just a variance process, most jurisdictions have an adjustment. The threshold for a deviation from a criteria is less. I mean, the variance is, you know, you got to prove hardship. Essentially, the adjustment says, I think we can design this in a different way that really meets the intent of what you're trying to accomplish with your standard. And so that was written in and given to the director through a type-two, so a staff-level decision, but you'd see it in type-threes, and we saw that with the high school, with kind of the plaza out in front, the building wasn't up to the street, could they come up with a design? Lot of conditions associated with that. The second thing is, you know, it's hard, because, you know, the planning approval of a subdivision is still somewhat conceptual. I mean, it's not engineered drawings, right? Because you have that next stage of refinement. So essentially, what we're finding is that, you know, it appears, based on the information, they can meet this standard. Now, they're going to get back with the engineers, and the road may move over a couple feet, or, you know, something's going to happen, right? So when we attach conditions, it's not necessarily because they're not meeting a standard, it's because, let's say someone submits a great application, and they're like, we're going to build a fifty-three-foot right-of-way, it's going to have thirty-two feet of pavement, half-foot curbs, five-foot planter, five-foot sidewalk, half-foot utility strip, light pole, street trees every thirty-five feet, but they forget to put in that they got to put in base rock. So then we just attach our generic condition that says, you know, all of that, right? You're going to put in the base rock, blah, blah, blah. So some of those are just us protecting ourself.
Right.
After the fact, even though.
And that works.
Right, yeah.
I think one of the things, from my point of view, that kind of muddied that high school application was the fact that we were dealing with a specific development and a master plan at the same time, and my perception was that those conditions kind of got blended. It, I think, would have been a lot easier for us to review and come to some conclusions if there had been a clear, these conditions are relevant to this specific development, you know, and these are related to the master plan. And that way, in terms of the timing, because I know Denise expressed a lot of concern about things that might not get accomplished right away, those are conditions that are way out here. So if we could have just focused on these forty conditions relate to the building itself, and these thirty relate to the master plan, it might have been more clear as far as the timing.
Do you think it would have been more beneficial to present that as two separate applications?
Yes.
Because that was a pretty crappy master plan application.
Yeah, we should have made two separate decisions that evening.
Yeah.
On the master plan.
But let's say, so, okay, that's good to know. I mean, that's easy enough to do, right? We can bring up a master plan, because, you know, the applicant's allowed to run things concurrently, and we don't run into these very often, but we will with the hospital, we're going to run into with the college, both of those are going to be coming in in the near future.
But that's, see, that's what made it muddy, was.
We're bouncing all over the place.
We were jumping back and forth between development issues and master plan issues, and when you're talking about the whole campus versus that piece of property, it just, it was difficult to balance out that decision-making process. I think if they had been on separate tracks, it would have been a lot easier to separate the issues.
The eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room was the fact that the doggone master plan for the high school is already built, for me.
And they hadn't done about half the stuff.
Well, that's the other issue, that's the other issue. How can we, how can we address that in the sense that no plan comes before us, the city, comes before the city unless the conditions have been met?
And, well.
I think it was difficult on some of those.
The building development itself, if you just look at the criteria there, was really a pretty simple application. What made it confusing was trying to blend that with the master plan, because we were, on one hand, talking about how many parking spaces they were entitled to on that piece of property, but we're trying to balance that by how many parking spaces they are allowed for the whole campus. And based on the. And based on the, the lack of the transportation study, that threw the whole thing into uncertainty. And we're hearing complaints by the neighborhood that people are parking in the neighborhood, which would tend to make you think they need more parking. But on the other hand, the master plan tends to tell us that they're already parked, so which is true?
You know, it's been a long, long time ago, but the foundation for a hearing of any kind of a quasi-judicial process, I think that was 1968 or something like that when the son of it came down. But the essence of it was the applicant has the onus on them to come before this planning commission and to present the facts, not Tony. He doesn't necessarily, by law, is required to present the applicant's plan, he's supposed to.
But I, I do think, and, and I think this is kind of, from what I'm hearing from what Denise and Paul were saying in the emails that they sent out, it would have been a lot easier to sort through those issues if the, if that application had been separated into two different applications. And then it would have been easy to evaluate, these criteria apply to that application and these criteria apply to that application.
So let me ask you another, it's hypothetical, sometimes we'll get, you know, we need to bring a subdivision up because there's a variance request. And kind of the variance is wrapped up in the subdivision. So you, you think it's more of these larger projects where you've got this concept and then they're trying to run concurrently one or two buildings in phase one to be reviewed? That I, it's pretty clear that it makes a lot of sense to separate those two decisions. But sometimes I feel like we've got to package some of these because they're so intertwined. You just took the variance standing alone on itself, I'm not sure if that'd be the way to do that.
Well, and, and the other side of what Charles said earlier of, you know, separate them out and we'll just deal with the building. Well, the, the big argument we hear from the people and that we're seeing ourselves is, you know, we, we approve these 10 buildings, so the intersection's fine. We approve these 10 buildings, so the intersection's fine. We approve these three buildings, the intersection collapses, so the three buildings don't get built. But the intersection's still, you know, I mean, and so my concern, if we hadn't had those, you know, the master plan and the, and the building come together is, would it have been, you know, another impact of the thousand little cuts? You know, would we have looked at that and went, oh, well, it's, you know, it's the same buses, they're coming and going except for the dozen, you know, elementary school buses that never go anywhere near them, you know, who cares, it's at five and not seven. But, you know, there's that whole, I mean, part of the holistic stuff we looked at, which wasn't even in our purview, was the impact of the additional parking on the park, you know, and the availability to that, which I thought was really good and an important part of the discussion. I kind of think in a way, they're on notice, you got to come up with an IGA with the Parks Department about them using the. And so, um, so I think, you know, it, it just, I, I'm okay with getting both applications at the same time. You know, working them together, I just think that, um, you know, like you said, Charles said earlier, you know, the first 40 deal with the building, the next 30 deal with the master plan or, you know, something like that. Even if they're still with the P's and the D S's and all that afterward, that's fine, I like that actually. But, um, that way there's, you know, we can keep the big picture going in our head about, you know, the intersections here and the, you know, and the sewer there and the floodwaters hither and yon, like we're going to have to do with load of road in Beaver Creek when the time comes. So I, I think it just needs to be an, an internal separation, not necessarily an application separation.
I think, I think one of the things too I've noticed is, um, you know, it, it was a lot of information to try to present in the time that theoretically we have. And I think that's maybe hopefully something we can work on in terms of, you know, we've set up a hearing process and we, you know.
We never do it.
But, so, you know, the one, one thing that concerned me is, right, my staff went way over. The applicant's staff went way over. Right, and then someone comes up and we say three minutes.
Yeah, they're, they're.
If I'm them, I would challenge and say, you just gave them 50, right, and so.
And we've heard complaints about that.
It just opens ourself up to another liability.
Right, because we, uh, we have guidelines that say the applicant's going to get 15 minutes and then they get 45 minutes. Well, that's not 15 minutes, it's not even close.
So what I've told my staff, you know, is, we have 15 minutes. Stick to that as staff. We're going to start pushing the applicant and say, you need to present, you have 15 minutes to present. Now, you guys can certainly ask questions after the fact.
Right.
And that goes over.
And we need to be on.
That's the thing, just for the equity issue of, of the expectation.
I, I think that's the, the one thing that we, we probably, as a commission, exacerbate the problem that rather than letting the applicant present their whole presentation, we interrupt them and start asking questions and it would be a lot, I think, more orderly if we'd give them their 15 minutes, let them make their whole presentation and then if people have questions, we can.
Because then, because then at least we can say they presented within 15 minutes and if you guys want to question them for an hour.
Right, which, which is the reason that I, I've typically been running the timer because almost without exception, everybody goes over time. There's been a rare occasion where somebody finishes and it's like, there's still 45 seconds left on your time, what happened? But I, I think just as a commission, if we could discipline ourselves, let them make their 15-minute presentation, write down any questions you've got, and then when it comes time to ask the questions, rather than, you know, be redundant, each one of us can ask unique questions. And if, you know, say Zach has a question that I think was really helpful, I might follow up on that with a second question, but not just keep beating that point to death.
I think, you know, and for me, I, you know, I, you know, it's hard, like, like there was a question about, you know, why do they let the students off campus at lunch? It's none of our business.
It's a policy decision.
Of the school district, a separate entity, and I'm not sure how to get off of, right?
Right.
It's like, if we're going to ask questions, I'd, I want it to be relevant to the application.
To the approval.
Yeah.
And, and that, again, I think that's a, a discipline on our part. On the one hand, we're telling the public that when you come up here to talk about this issue, that you're, what, what you're talking about needs to be relevant to the criteria. And then we turn around and we ask questions that are completely irrelevant to the criteria.
Exactly, yeah. And I'm not sure how to kind of massage, you know.
You could install a little electric feet out here to kick us in the shins.
Well, I think as part of that is our responsibility, we have to hold our feet to the fire and say, hey, wait a minute.
Cow prod.
In a friendly manner.
Well, and frankly, I do appreciate that from time to time, Tony, you've, you've, you've said that's really not a criteria that we're concerned about with this application.
I mean, one of the worst things we write in our staff reports is, you know, we get the citizen comment and it's not applicable to an approval criteria. Right, I mean, nobody wants to respond that way to the public.
I'm sure it wasn't there.
That the house values are going to be too low.
Let's, let's say somebody decides to challenge us on the basis that we didn't do our job because we wandered. We didn't stick to the point, we didn't do the public's business because we didn't raise the issues.
And, and that's where I think it's, it's a matter for us to just focus on the criteria and be disciplined about it and not start, like Tony said, get into policy issues that they're not relevant.
You know, just so you, so the commission's aware, you know, when, when we prepare our presentations to you, because we know we have a limited amount of time, is we kind of, we do a little guessing, right, but we've, we've gone through this thing and, you know, it's however many hundreds of pages of documents and documentation. And, and we know that there are certain points where there are issues, whether it's a condition we're imposing or an interpretation. So we try to identify what we think are the issues. So, you know, just have that in mind when we're presenting to you. It's kind of, we think 95% of this stuff is pretty routine. Here's the 5% that, you know, some of it's an interpretation, some of it's not your typical thing, or some of it's just a condition that we don't think they're meeting. And so we had to impose it.
And I really appreciate that you and your staff say things like, and this is a gray area that we need you to make a determination. So that it's real clear that no matter what else comes out of this, that, you know, some, the answer to this gray area is, is resolved. And so I, I mean, to me, that's our entire purpose here, is to interpret the gray areas.
I agree.
Because your job's real clear, it's black or white.
That, that was actually one thing that I thought that was really well-done in the high school presentation is you made it clear that there's a couple of things here that we need you to make a ruling on. And we were able to do that. So that, that kind of helps us focus on what those issues are.
I guess, you know, I think, you know, I think that there are, what's hard is we're taking this. Like, I, I honestly sometimes tell applicants that if you have a specific building that would typically be reviewed by staff as a type-two decision, everybody wants to run everything, right, everything's got to be done yesterday, right? So they, they see the, the perceived, the perceived speed in combining. But I think it creates a little confusion because like, we'll put a condition on there that says the applicant needs to submit a revised mitigation tree planting plan. All right, because, you know, like I said, parking lots are going to shift, you know, certain trees may be saved, they might not be saved. We don't know until they get to the construction component, but sometimes I feel like it's like, oh, let's, 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 let's have a discussion about tree mitigation. Maybe we should have four-inch caliper trees instead of two, but it's not backed by the code, which is where I start to get nervous. Because it's like, you know, we want a certain type of design. You know, if we want a certain type of design, we should adopt it and put it in code.
Well, and, and I, I think frankly, that's one of the issues that we, as a commission, struggle against. We are performing a planning review, this is not a design review. A design review, we get an opportunity to make subjective judgment about how a building looks, you know, does it feel good?
Right.
Our review really, as a planning review, ought to be more, more objective. They're either meeting the criteria or they're not.
Right.
And if they're not, then how are they, as you say, mitigating that variance?
Pragmatically, I think we've saved ourselves from approving some pretty ugly buildings by saying it's certain ways.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the limitations of our code, is we, you know, a couple of years ago, we did look at the possibility of setting up a design commission, right? Essentially, because of the requirement for clear and objective standards. Unfortunately, our site plan and design review is very, for the most part, there's not a lot of subjectivity theoretically. I mean, it's 60% transparency on the first floor, right? Either you got 60 feet out of 100 or you don't, pretty black and white. But, you know, we did think about trying to set up this design review board. It's just, we just don't see a lot of it, you know? So we didn't go that route, but.
Well, I guess, you know, and, and this is just way theoretical, but we don't see a lot of it. West Lynn may not see a lot, Gladstone may not see a lot, maybe there's enough that there could be like a tri-city design review board.
Do you want to give up your ability to make the decisions, the local, I mean, that's the whole governance.
But that's, but that's just design, I mean, there's, it's still got to meet our criteria and everything else, so.
The problem with the design review is it gets pretty subjective.
Yeah.
I mean, you pretty much are saying, either meet our, you know, and I forget if it was, I think it was Hillsborough who redid their site plan and design review and it's like, on, you know, 100 and some pages, and so everybody goes to the design review.
See, from, from, from the architect and designer point of view.
Clear and objective.
You don't like that subjective cr- uh, review because what happens is you go in and if you have a, a group of people like this and there's one guy on there, one woman on there that has a particular hot button.
Yep.
That they are concerned about. And I, I can tell you from personal experience, we have had that happen to us when we go in. There's nothing in the code that says we have to change this, but we know that in order to get approved, we're going to have to do it.
Tope is not a natural paint color.
I'm just telling you, there is a huge cost to some of those subjective, uh, opinions that people have. I mean, we're talking about, you know, tens and tens, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars of impact on a design just because somebody doesn't like the way it looked.
Yeah, no, I, you know, understand, you know, both sides of that, you know, historic review boards have been pretty good about it, we've been pretty successful, but.
But you also gave them a clear basis of, these are the acceptable colors, these are the acceptable.
You do a very good job of sticking within that playing field, essentially.
Philosophically, I think you've got to look at it from a standpoint of, Charles, what you're saying is, there's an element of freedom of speech here, freedom of expression, that we really want to take that on? I don't, I don't.
Well, you know, Portland has the design Nazis and.
Yeah.
We, we go into those planning commission or design, uh, review hearings with trepidation because we, we know that there's going to always be something that they're going to kick back at us, always.
I guess all I, I guess I would ask is that as we're going through this, you know, is really try and think about, okay, is this, is there a code criteria that I, because, you know, it's some things we hear, it's like, that's nowhere in the code, how in the world are we going to do this?
Exactly.
Right, other than the same thing, they just want approval.
Yeah.
Right, they're willing to agree to anything.
Yeah.
When they're sitting up here. But if there are things that we think we're lacking, you know, let's, let's address that through changing the code. So it gives us the ability, if we think we're missing something or lacking something or want to see something done differently. You know, then staff's empowered, so it's not up in front of you and we're kind of winging it at the divas.
But we have to keep in mind that, that the code will change for the next applicant, that this person's still grandfathered in on what they've got.
Right.
And we need to approve or disapprove that and then say, Tony, this, this, this element sucks. We want to see it fixed, you know? And then, and then of course you go, what does you mean by sucks? But, you know, but at the, at that point, it's irrelevant to the application that's in front of us, it's about the future.
And I think, you know, with, you know, and I think there are some things that, you know, are brought up where we've already worked through it. Right, or, you know, one of the biggest things we run up on top of the hill is that because of the clay soil, LID improvements are very, very difficult.
Yeah.
You know, there's no ability to have the water perked down.
Yeah.
You know, and so when we talk about a, a green parking lot or more bioswells, it just, the engineering doesn't work.
Right.
Right, but that being said, you know, we adopted new stormwater standards that are going to go into effect in Au- in Au- in August. And even just so you're aware, the applicant has to show, our, our first is LID, keep it on the site, right? Keep the stormwater, put it back in the ground on site. Show us why you can't or how much you can and then we deal with the excess. Then you move to the next mitigation, and, you know, the, really the last is, you know, pumping it off somewhere. So, I mean, we're slow, we're slowly making those improvements that I think come up frequently, right? And there may be a reason why, and like I said, up on the hilltop, it's, it's just, there's just clay everywhere.
Yeah.
Well, Tony, isn't it something that can be, uh, determined, the solution can be determined at the staff level, the administrative level, rather than bringing it to the planning commission and ask us to, to make a judgment on it?
Well, yeah, usually, it, usually, like I said, when we bring up a staff report, we've usually identified the things that we think are issues, right? Or we heard from the public about this, so we want to, want to vet it, right? You know, there's 50 other things in there that are just standard, right? They've met it, it's obvious, we may attach a condition to it because we have a certain engineering spec. And, and so, but, but, you know, I, I have no idea, you know, what, what may be of interest to you, right? Or you're reading through and it's like, huh, why didn't they do that this way, right?
But I, I think what Robert's getting to is that there, there are applications that we don't ever see because they've already been approved at the staff level.
Right.
And, and we don't have to see.
That's level two, type two.
We, we don't have to see those, it's only when they, they reach a certain threshold that they have to be brought to us.
Okay, but when they are brought to us and standards have been met, we don't have to deal with it. We just have to deal with the standards that haven't been met.
Exactly.
Because that's the public issue.
You know, that's one thing I, I wanted to say because it, it, it might sound like we're all kind of being critical, but I, I, I want you to understand from my point of view, working in the industry, working with all these other planning departments, I think you guys have done a great job. And I know you've got some new people that are kind of, you know, working their way through the, the learning curve, but generally speaking, most of the applications that we've seen here, I think, have been pretty high-quality applications. And I attribute that to you and your staff vetting them before they came here. And I think, you know, the, the high school application is maybe an anomaly in a sense, but it, it kind of, it caught our attention because.
Because it's an anomaly.
Yeah, it was like. Yeah, it was like, whoa, what happened with that one?
I think, you know, I don't mean to harp on this, but, you know, when we send something up, if it says approval with conditions, it's because we truly, I think, we've worked through and met the criteria, right? Or we bring it up and we say, we need your interpretation, right? Here's our recommendation, but in the end, it's your decision, right? Or we send it up with a denial, which doesn't happen very often because, you know, part of what I see our job is, is to try to work all those issues out at the staff level. So that we can approve, unless we get to a point where we just can't, right? Then we start the process for the appeals and as they're entitled to, through that process. So really, just so you, from our philosophy, we get applications all the time that it's just like, no, 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 no. You need to do this, 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 you need, here's the criteria. So there is a lot of that, that, you know, between the pre-app and the submittal, a lot of work goes into, you know, street location, street design, if it's gonna be a modified street or building location, parking lot. You know, because we don't want to bring you guys something that, A, you have to deny. You know, our goal is to get people, you know, here's the criteria, it's not that hard. Here's how we interpret it.
The, the other thing I think we all need to recognize is no matter how good the proposal is, there's always going to be people in the public that don't like it. And it can simply be because they don't want to change. And we've seen that, like, for example, with the South End Concept Plan. There were a lot of people that were opposed to it because they just didn't want to see that area changed. It wasn't that, it was a bad concept plan, they just didn't want to change. And I think we see that on a lot of these applications is, it's okay to build that. I just don't want it in my neighborhood. Go build it down the road someplace else and I'll be okay with it. The other thing is that there are people that have particular hot button concerns and we see those people come in here, you know, almost every time we have a, a big application. And I appreciate that they, they have concerns about particular issues. But, you know, we, we have to move forward. Because just denying all development is not a solution.
And I think, you know, if there are questions about geologic hazards, right? We'd be happy to bring that forward again for a little education or, you know, whatnot. Because, you know, I think we, like I said, you know, looking, it feels like, you know, just these little baby steps. But when you look at it over the entirety of addressing some of these issues, we have made significant change. And in some instances, honestly, I think we've swung too far. I think tree mitigation is one where we have swung way too far.
Yeah, but you know, like Damon was saying, if, if you build one house at a time, nobody's gonna notice the traffic impact. But over a twenty-year period, building one house at a time, tremendous traffic.
It's the story of Oregon City.
So the difference between building one house at a time versus coming in with a development where you're gonna build twenty-five or thirty houses, what's the difference?
I think you see that with the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. We're grappling with that. I think it's wonderful that we have finally done concept planning. I think that the lack of parks and connectivity in some of our neighborhoods is a direct result of no long-range planning or thought process.
And observing county.
But the difficulty is, is the same one that we run into with the master plans is once you start applying even a modest two percent background growth on existing conditions, your capacity is, the capacity's gone. So then what do you do, right? So we can't even build what we want because of just the background growth in the county.
Well, and, and we keep facing the same issue that probably three-fourths of the traffic that goes through Oregon City doesn't originate in Oregon City. So we're accommodating all the traffic that's coming from others.
It's very, very, very frustrating, you know, when we have to raise STCs or whatnot. And then you build it and the capacity gets chewed up by the, you know, we don't even get the benefit of that.
Damon's suggestion is the answer.
We've got bridge, we've got three bridges, so that takes care of east, west and north. And, you know, south is pretty easy. There's only the two, two roads. Just, just put it in New Era, because that way you'll take care of the south end. And New Era's county land, so.
But I think, I think what I'm hearing, you know, I think we can certainly try to give the due time to some of these more complex, break them up. You know, we'll talk a little bit more, you know, because this is just institutional, right? It's essentially what we do is we go through the staff report, right? The conditions kind of match up the approval criteria as we're walking through, you know? We can talk about, is there an easier way to group these that would, that would be a little easier to read in the conditions? You know, we've really tried to move to identifying departments, which makes sense internally to us. We can certainly look at that.
Well, thank you for taking the time to work through this.
Real quick, before we do wrap the, and you mentioned tree mitigation. I was gonna ask the question, on our caliper ratio, I mean, I haven't looked at it, right? Is, and I'm just throwing something theoretical, is a four-inch caliper the, the same mitigation as two-twos? Or is there a scale because you're getting a bigger, older, more mature tree?
We just did a straight, two to two. We really tried to emphasize like heritage-type trees, white oaks, those type of trees.
Yeah, because it just seems to me that, that I think on some of these developments, we would end up with, if there was some sort of, you know, inclining scale, that we might either get some older trees brought in or some older trees saved because their value to the mitigation might be. But that's, that's for the tree plan when the time comes.
I think, honestly, the problem is that we don't have a comprehensive tree policy in the city, right? So we kind of tried to wriggle around developments that come in. It's just, it's, it's not comprehensive. It doesn't make sense. And to mitigate, you can't fit it on the property.
And I frankly hate the whole street treat concept.
Well, not only that, but the smaller trees are actually better than larger trees.
Survivability.
For survivability, they get used to the hydrologic regime that they're in. Whereas the, the larger tree is used to something else and can often die when it goes into a new environment.
Well, and I'm not saying like, you know, fourteen-inch, but, you know, even bringing in fours or whatever.
I'm not sure. It'd be a discussion. I'm not sure how, I mean, Leno Laco has a, Laco Swigo has a pretty significant tree code currently. You know, but, you know, I think.
We just had a survey about it and it's about fifty-five to forty-five. Support and support. So it's not a mandate, but it's there.
Because I think one of the things we, we struggled with is it's just always been more economical to clear the, clear the land, right? Just clear it. So, you know, we did ramp up, you know, you may, you know, if you're in a building footprint, you know, it's kind of a one-for-one. If you're outside of it, it's, you know, and I forget off the top of my head. It's based on the caliper and then it's, but it's more, right? If you took out a tree, exact same size tree, one in the building footprint, one out, the mitigation outside is three times more. We thought that would be a deterrent. It's not, right? So somehow there, if, if it's something we want to look at is how do we, you gotta keep ten percent, right? But it's an arbitrary number and we, we would have run into it on the high school site, right? How do you do that? So unfortunately, we've come a long way. It's just, it's a little piecemeal, a little clunky.
What I appreciate is that all the work you guys have done gives us the ability to talk about something like this. We're not worried about, you know, pavement widths and, you know, setbacks and, I mean.
That's pretty standard at this point.
Yeah, because of the work you guys have done and now we can worry, work up, I don't know if you call it quality of life questions or whatever, but the more esoteric elements of planning, you know, and, and I appreciate the fact that we have the ability to do that and we're not stuck in the minutia of seventeen dot nine zero dot five B and why it isn't, you know, applicable at this point, you know?
And I think there's other things, you know, and I, I probably don't do a good enough job of this and bringing forth. Like, for example, we have a line item in the budget every, every year for tree plantings in public areas, right? Significant trees. We've seen some of them, like at Carnegie, we put in larger caliper trees of certain type of species. So between myself, Parks and Public Works, you know, we're constantly finding locations, whether it be stream corridors, prominent spots along the right-of-way to plant significant trees or, you know, you know, riparian area, more of the smaller ones, right, to get that tree canopy. We are entering into a contract with Friends of Trees to start. McLaughlin and Berkeley Hills are gonna be the first two neighborhoods where we, we've contracted with Friends of Trees as part of our Tree City USA designation. So, I mean, there's other stuff we're doing, but, you know, when you see three hundred trees come down on a twelve-acre, I mean, everybody gets concerned and it's understandable, so.
What would get me is how many people are just as upset at three hundred cottonwoods as they are three hundred dog fur. Cottonwoods are weed. I'm sorry.
They are habitat, though.
They're still weeds.
What, what, do you know what our canopy cover is in Oregon City?
Oh, it's been, I'd have to pull it out. We had a study done probably ten years ago.
That's off the top of your head. That's don't worry about it. I'm just.
Not that good.
Okay, we're done? Thank you.